Evening, ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the Ridley Township Board of Commissioners meeting this May twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-three. We'll begin with the project unit's in flag.
The question is, "In flag, United States of America, do you think that all of which states, one nation, under God, invincible, never be in justice?"
Okay, I'd like to call this meeting to orders. Wrong call. Mr. Sarasini?
Here.
This is Marisette?
Here.
This is Cummings?
Here.
This is McManaman?
Here.
This is Saunders?
Here.
This is Warwick?
Here.
This is Warwick, here. This is Malaseka?
Here.
And Mr. Bedore?
Here.
Okay, uh, okay, we'd like to welcome the Scouts of Woodland Troop Forty-three here tonight. Uh, our requirement of the communications merit badge is to attend a public meeting. So, welcome, and I'm sure you'll learn quite a lot here this time. But, uh, we always love honoring the Boy Scouts, really do, and they're kidding around. Because it's really special kids. They really care about the community, you really get involved, and I give you kids a lot of credit, stay with it. It's always a good time, and you learn a lot, and you learn how to do things, and it's terrific, and, uh, I love you, you're leavers too, because you guys give up your time to show these young men and women how to, how to do things, and camp, and a lot of other things to serve the community, and, and that's a great thing, so we appreciate it. So, somebody wants to come up, our senior patrol leader, Zach, uh, I can't. Zach, what's your last name?
Gronaski.
You can turn your whole face outside. Better look at them. Get your own camera.
Good evening, my name is Zach Gronaski, and I'm the senior patrol leader for BSA Troop Forty-three. On behalf of the Scouts, parents, and adult leaders, I would like to thank the Ridley Township Commissioners for their support. Since nineteen-thirty, a Boy Scout troop has existed to provide a scouting experience to the boys in the Ridley Township area. Our present cabin built in nineteen-fifty-one on Belmont Avenue in Folsom continues the tradition to this present day. Your support, especially with our annual Crum Creek street stream cleanup at the Ridley High School, our annual yard sale that provides funds to cover our utility bills, and the many Eagle Scouts, you have been so kind to present an official resolution from this board is greatly appreciated. We are here tonight completing our requirement for our communications merit badge, but we all want to take this opportunity to show our, to show our appreciation for all you do for us. Thank you.
Nice job, Zach. Okay, before we get into resolutions, we'd like to acknowledge and congratulate Donna MacLeigh, cafeteria manager, and Teresa O'Brien, instrumental music teacher. Both are Lakewood Elementary School, on their retirements after a combined sixty-seven years of service. So, congratulations. We'd also like to recognize Chelsea Kasalak, age ten, from Folsom. Chelsea won the bronze all-around gymnastics title at a recent USA IGC Pennsylvania State Championship meet held in Brumall. The competition featured eight teams from across the state. Chelsea is a member of the Delco Gymnastics Team from Woodling. So, congratulations to Chelsea, that's great news. We'd also like to congratulate Jameer Taylor, this year's recipient of the Andy Wonski Memorial Scholarship at Ridley High School. Jameer received the scholarship at the high school senior awards ceremony held earlier this month. We wish Jameer and all the graduates of Class of Twenty-Twenty-three the best wishes for success. Always good to start off with some good news. Okay, we have a couple resolutions tonight. First, we have an Eagle Scout, Wayne McCafferty. This is Malaseka. He's not here, so you can just read it in. I am here. I will be at the meeting. I am either, uh, what did I say? Uh, Wyatt McCafferty. I already have one contact. I'm old.
It's close enough.
Call works. Me too. Turn around and face the audience.
Whereas Wyatt McCafferty, a member of Troop Three-Fifty-Five in Holmes, was invested as an Eagle Scout, and whereas Wyatt is a senior at Ridley High School and a member of the Boys Tennis Team, and whereas for his Eagle Scout project, Wyatt superheaded the installation of three spectator benches at the high school tennis courts for use by his teammates, opponents, and spectators. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Ridley does hereby acknowledge and salute both the achievements of Wyatt McCafferty as a Boy Scout and his investiture as an Eagle Scout, and on behalf of the citizens of the Township of Ridley, the Board expresses its sincere congratulations on this outstanding achievement. Be it further resolved that this resolution shall be recorded in the official minutes of the Township of Ridley, and that a copy of this resolution shall be presented to Wyatt McCafferty, adopted this twenty-fourth day of May, twenty-twenty-three. Township of Ridley Board of Commissioner Joseph Ryan, manager, and Robert Weller, president.
Wyatt, you want to say anything?
We don't have to hook that or anything.
Thank you for this honor tonight, and I also want to thank my mom for setting this up for me. I really appreciate it. Uh, thank you, guys.
You already very quick. Thank mom. Congratulations. That's, that's very, uh, very impressive. Good job. Okay, our second one resolution is for Sister Catherine McCamara, McCarver Bay. Uh, whereas Sister Catherine McCamara, IHM, Director of Religious Education at St. Rose Aliment, will be leaving the parish after her thirty years of spiritual inspiration. And whereas for sixty years, Sister Katie, as she is affectionately known, has given generously of her time and effort serving the McCarver Bay community. Whereas Sister Katie will be assigned to the Amelie Hall's Pastoral Care Department, attending her vacation by faithfully serving priests and religious brothers and sisters. And whereas Sister Katie has touched many, many lives in her ministry at St. Rose Aliment through her work as Director of Parish Services, Director of Religious Education, Parish Outreach Coordinator, Ministry to the Sick, Hung Bound, Dying, and Breathing, Administrator for the Toys for Toys and Turkey Drives held annually as a Director of Supplemental Preparation for Students Attending St. James' National School. Whereas Sister Katie is a wonderfully dedicated servant of God, whose good works throughout her years at St. Rose Aliment has earned her the respect and admiration of all those with whom she has crossed paths with, as well as the love and affection of the St. Rose Aliment Church or congregation. Therefore, be it resolved that Board of Commissioners of Township of Ridley hereby acknowledge Sister Katie for her many years of devotion, loyalty, and commitment to St. Rose Aliment Parish community. And on behalf of the citizens of Township of Ridley, we wish her much happiness and success in her new assignment at Amelie Hall. Be it further resolved, this resolution shall be recorded in the official minutes of Township of Ridley, and a copy of this resolution shall be presented to Sister Katie, adopted this twenty-fourth day of May, twenty-twenty-three. Township of Ridley Board of Commissioners, Joseph Ryan, Secretary, Robert K. Ward, President. And just so you know, we dedicated a, a street for Sister Katie, right by St. Rose, by the church, Sister Katie Drive, or Street now. So, we, we did that, uh, like six months ago or something. And we already, already thankful on Friday nights. That's great to see. Sure shall be missed. We need a, do you need a motion for both resolutions?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Motion made in second. Any question on the motion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Okay, we received two block party requests. The first from Wood Road between Grace Road and Hardsley Road for June third, and the second is Clymer Lane, House number six forty-nine, House six ninety-seven, for June twenty-fourth. Need a motion to approve. Motion made in second. Any question on the motion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. We received a special bench permit request for this insanity at Fairview Road and Jefferson Avenue to hold outside workouts on Monday, May twenty-ninth, Memorial Day, from eight AM to twelve noon in the parking lot. Need a motion to approve.
I won't be there, but I'll make a motion.
Motion made in second. Any questions on the motion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Recycling report, Mrs. Malaseka.
Thank you, Mr. President. Trash collected in April was one thousand two hundred and twenty-three point sixty-nine tons. Recycling collected in April was one hundred fifty-six point fifty-one tons. We collected fifteen TVs in April through our television monitor recycling program. More information on our program is available on the township website at www.ridleytownship.org.
Thank you. Services report, Mr. Neal.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, there was a tax assessment appeal filed by the school district to Ridley Township for the property of three oh six to Tate Boulevard, which is the Wells Fargo Bank, following number three eight oh three dash zero one one two five dash zero three, which resulted in negotiated settlement for an increased assessed value. Uh, the county had the, um, assessed value of one million, twenty-two thousand, three hundred and ten dollars. It was negotiated for twenty one, like, two, twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two for two million, eight hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars, and for twenty twenty-three, two million, three hundred and fifteen thousand, four hundred dollars. Uh, this resulted in an increase of approximately fifteen thousand, six hundred and thirty-five dollars for twenty-one and twenty-twenty-two, and twelve thousand, six hundred and forty-nine dollars for twenty-twenty-three. Um, this settlement was approved by the Ridley Board of School Directors on the first of twenty-twenty-three. We need a motion for approval of settlement and authorization for me to sign the stipulation that fixes assessed value for, uh, twenty twelve, twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two at two million, eight hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars, and twenty twenty-three at two million, three hundred and fifteen thousand, four hundred dollars.
Motion made in second. Any question on the motion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Uh, next, we received a request for an intermunicipal transfer of a liquor license uh, from JJC, twenty-twelve, I think. It's, it's located in Fallcroft, for the premises located at twenty-one Seventy-Monte Tate Boulevard in Holmes. Okay. So, I've reached out to the attorney in this matter, but the message for him, but we're going to schedule a public hearing, uh, within the next forty-five to sixty days.
What's opening up here?
Um, my understanding is that there's going to be a beer distributorship in there. It's the, uh, mattress market. Apparently, they have to send it to Holmes.
I will just schedule a meeting. We're not giving any approvals or anything. It's just for happy.
And that meeting could be June or July, and it'll be advertised.
Do we have that part?
No, just, uh...
Well, we don't need any action.
Next, the next matter...
Just beer, right? Or we'll find out.
Yeah, I don't know, I don't know much more than that.
Okay.
The, uh, next, the next matter that I have on my agenda is the RBN project. That's the, for a car wash at four twenty in Tate Boulevard. Um, it's been, uh, negotiated an extension for an agreement of sale, um, for the piece of Man Park, approximately point six four acres, rather than point nine one acres, and sale price of four hundred and five thousand, nine hundred dollars. Uh, this would be contingent on, some of the contingencies would be settlement occurring within sixty days of today's meeting, demolition of the buildings by the, um, by the developer or owner. Uh, we've been, it's been talked about within sixty days of settlement, but again, that's subject. And then if, uh, if that does not occur within the time period agreed upon, the property then will be revert back to the township. Uh, also that it's, it's agreed that only a car wash may be constructed, um, with the, you know, in the agreement at this point, and if that's not done, again, the property would revert back to the township. There is also necessary, there's a current land, um, land use zoning appeal that would have to be resolved amongst the parties, and also an agreement for an amendment to the agreement of sale with the details in, you know, normal legal leaves language that would have to be executed by the parties, any other documents, any other documents.
This property has already been approved for, I've got it going on for years, I'm waiting for them. Um, the piece of property in the back is level law, so they keep, well, we did that in the very beginning, because we thought we could get a Walgreens or something like that, so it's been multiple things. The reason we put it out was that if it's not a car wash, we would hold that as leverage, because we don't want a car wash to back out and, you know, do something else like their cash for gold or other nail salon.
Yeah.
Right now, so at least that, that way, if it's not, the purpose of this is to help with the development on that corner. So, if they're not going to, we want to get that back. And then the sixty days is, hey, we want to see some movement that's knocking down the buildings. Knocking down, it would be hard run for us to...
Yeah.
Yeah, we've extended this thing so long.
Yeah, we've extended it. Well, they finally got the hit that we're not doing it anymore. You got to get moving.
Yeah.
And we're okay with it. So, I, I say, we approve this with conditions that, you know, the manager, we're not going to approve it tonight. Subject to the manager approval.
And making sure they keep to those, those standards.
There's still a couple times going back and forth, like we're trying to, to talk to them about tearing down the buildings before the sixty days.
Yeah.
And that was today, so...
So, that's sixty days, and then it's going to extend you because I'm doing something. Let's get it started. Yeah.
And that's, this, this agreement is, you got sixty days to tear down the buildings, or else we take it back and move on.
Yep.
And so, you need a motion.
Okay, just need a motion for the extension agreement of sale in preparation of the minimum to be moved to sale, subject to the solicitors you do with township house.
Make a motion.
I'll second.
Motion made in second. Any question on the motion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Actionery report, Mr. Kindred.
Thanks, Mr. President. First, uh, to be against first consideration, Scorp Incorporated for the Amherst Avenue Sanitary Terrace Survey Line, nineteen thousand, six hundred and fifty dollars. McMahon Associates for the Varley Grant Construction Services, three thousand, five hundred dollars. Duke's Manhole Inspections, four thousand, one hundred and forty-six thousand, fifty cents. LB Construction Enterprises, Inc., McDade Boulevard and Sutton Avenue Drainage Improvements, four thousand, six hundred and sixty dollars. Glasgow, Inc. for the Twenty-Twenty-three Road Program, two hundred and fifty thousand, four hundred and ninety dollars and fifty-eight cents. AJ Jurk Incorporated, demolition and site clearance of twelve fifty Mildred Avenue, three thousand, sixty dollars. ADU Services for store maintenance, twenty twenty-two, twenty-two thousand, three hundred and forty-two dollars and ninety-nine cents. Mobile Draining Video Button Incorporated for the Braxton Road Sanitary Survey Line, forty-two thousand, one hundred and seventy-eight dollars, thirteen cents. General Store Service Incorporated for the Mistle Building Sanitary Survey Line, eleven thousand, two hundred dollars. And Abidino Contractors for the Mistle Building Sanitary Store Lateral Repair, five thousand, six hundred and sixteen dollars. And Abidino Contractors for Michigan and Mullenburg Avenue Manhole Repair, four thousand, two hundred and ninety-six dollars.
My second. Motion made in second. Any question on the motion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
The bid stipulation for the Clymer Lane Alley Drainage Improvements, bid to receive on May eighteenth, we review those bids and recommend award to the low bidder, N. Abidino Contractors, in a low bid amount of forty-five thousand, six hundred and ninety dollars.
Almost motion. Motion made in second. Any question on the motion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
To the Penn Dot Intersection Safety Improvements, Route four twenty of Franklin Avenues, the township received notice from Penn Dot that they awarded a contract to Armor &amp; Sons Electric with Langhorne for the safety improvements to the intersection of Keeter Avenue and Franklin Avenue. That work's actually started. Uh, the work will include replacing the sidewalks, ADA curb cuts, new pavement markings, signings, stop bars, crosswalks, replacement of the outdated traffic signals, and that work they expect to be completed sometime this summer.
Yeah, they're pretty far along. They have ready, I think, the polls on that. They've done nice jobs.
Much needed, much needed.
Much, correct. That's been a long time coming. Really, just information.
Information.
A second.
I'm okay with it.
That's okay.
Adoption of construction site safety maintenance standards. As requested, the code office of, uh, these standards were made, and the purpose is to establish minimum requirements for residents of commercial construction site safety maintenance.
You need a, you need a motion.
I make a motion.
Motion made in second. Any question on the motion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Is that it?
That's all I have, thank you.
Okay, Highway Sanitation Committee report, Mr. Warwick.
Thank you, Mr. President. Residents are reminded there will be no trash collection on Monday, May twenty-ninth, in observance of Memorial Day. That's all I have, isn't it?
All in order, spray report, Mr. Bedore.
Thank you, Mr. President. Would it refer to Mr. Neal?
Mr. President, before the, uh, board tonight is, uh, ordinance number twenty-seven four, which deals with amending the German Code of the Township of Ridley Chapter Eighty-Eight, brush, grass, and weeds, um, for service of notice. It's, what's going to be changed here is from ten days to five days. The notice has to be served by the code enforcement officer with respect to any grass, weeds, or brush that is, you know, needs to be removed.
So, is that bill, is that, that someone calls in, says, uh, a property is, that's a problem. They go out and see it. Do we have to send them a letter, and then it's five days from the letter, or is it five days?
No, it's five days from the serve.
So, okay.
So, it was, it was ten, or was it?
No, I know it's ten, five. I didn't know if it was from the letter itself, or from the, you know, whatever. Okay.
And then also, uh, section eighty-eight six, um, it's going to be amended to add the paragraph which the, uh, health officer will serve notice to eliminate tenor occupier plans, um, such as put up hedges, shovel, or vines. They have to remove that within five days also, if we see. That would be added to, you know, the section eighty-eight six that we already have. So, we would need, uh, a motion to adopt the ordinance number twenty-seven four.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Motion made in second. Any question about motion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Recreation Committee report, Mr. McManaman.
Thank you, Mr. President. There are still openings in a variety of sports camps being offered as part of one summer, our summer camps. Register online, www.ridleytp.org under the Parks and Recreation Department. Our Fall Festival will be held on Sunday, September seventeenth, from ten AM until two PM. The rain date will be September twenty-fourth. There will be a bike auction, Janus Dance Works dancers will be there, Jungle John's Reptile Show, and Gypsy's Wisdom will be there. There will be many vendors of, of Food Court, Homemade Winter Ice Truck, Zack's Food Truck, and more. So, hopefully, we'll see everybody out on September seventeen. That's it.
Thank you. Public Safety Committee report, welcome Lieutenant, uh, Danny. How are you?
Good.
Ready to say you're ready? For the month of April, our police channel one thousand, one hundred and thirty calls. The breakdown is as follows. Crumland, eighty-nine, Folsom, two hundred and ninety-five, Holmes, one hundred and twenty-seven, Lumont Park, fifty-four, Morse, forty-eight, Ridley Park, one hundred and thirty-three, C-King, one hundred and one, Swatmore, forty-four, and Woodding, two hundred and thirty-nine. Another busy month, Lieutenant. Good job.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
And I understand you're the one writing these novels.
Yes, sir. I, uh, sure do.
I'm going to shirt that up even more. Uh, just a couple, uh, brief, uh, highlights of our police department for the month. On April twenty-second, Officer Lorenic was on routine patrol when he conducted a vehicle stop for expired registration. An eventual research was initiated, a vehicle was going to be towed. Immediately contraband indicative of drug sales was observed, and a search warrant was sought. Upon executing a search warrant, an abundance of drugs, including heroin, methamphetamine, crack, cocaine, and marijuana were located. Found on the defendant was a large sum of cash and additional controlled substance. He faces charges on possession, intent to deliver, and other related charges. Good job. On May seventh, Officer Rowan was dispatched to the home section of the township for suspicious male pulling off, pulling on car handles. The subject had fled in a green vehicle after being confronted by a resident. Officer Rowan and officer located the vehicle short distance away. Upon activating emergency lights and sirens, pursuit ensued. The vehicle, uh, struck a parked car in Collingdale and went into some fences in the yard. The officers eventually caught up with the defendant. The defendant was placed under arrest after a brief struggle. He was found to be under the influence and operating a stolen vehicle along attempted thefts, and charged with penalty. Very good. On May eighth, Swatmore PD was dispatched to a catalytic converter theft within their jurisdiction. Three actors reported to have fled in a Chrysler product. Suspect vehicle was evaded, and the same had refused to stop for police. Officer Wright picked up the pursuit on I- ninety-five, and was traveling next to the Chrysler. Chrysler lost control, struck the side of Officer Wright's cruiser before coming to rest on the bank vehicle. One of the actors fled on the shoulder of I- ninety-five to a ditch at ten, and was tackled by Officer Wright as his commands were in order. He was taken into custody after brief stop on turnover Swatmore PD, along with two other actors who were apprehended. They face charges in this case investigation, possible involvement of other thefts as well. So, you know, their job's not easy sometimes. You never know how quickly that could turn to something deadly, and, uh, that guy, he was okay. And that guy did a great job.
Thank you.
That was very nice and short. Very good. Um, Health Committee Report, Mr. Seame.
Thank you, Mr. President. For the month of April, we had a hundred and seventy-seven permits issued, twenty-six contractors registered, thirty-six certificates of occupancy issued, two hundred and fifty-eight rental inspections, and fourteen health inspections. That's all.
Building, uh, Building Committee Report, Mr. Saunders.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, we have two items on the agenda tonight. Um, the first is a request for, from one thirty South Fairview Road LLC, asking for a six-month extension to act on their land development application. This application is for proposed warehouse building at the former driving range on Fairview Road. Like to make a motion to grant this six-month extension as requested.
I'll second that.
Motion made in second. Any question on the motion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
The second request is from Aliver Properties, Inc., asking for an extension to July twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-three, act on their application to subdivide the parcel of nineteen-nineteen West McDade Boulevard, a Columbia Research property, into two lots, one with existing commercial building, and the other with the existing home. No additional improvements are proposed. Like to make a motion to grant this extension as requested.
I'll second that.
Motion made in second. Any question on the motion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Library Research Center Committee Report, Miss Cummings.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Friends of Library kickoff to summer book sale will start Friday, June second. The Friends of Library Kukoff two summer book sale will start Friday, June second from five to seven. There is a huge array of hardbacks, pigbacks, movies, games and more, all at bargain prices. The sale continues Saturday, June third from nine AM to four PM and the following Monday and Tuesday during open hours. Stop by the library to stock up on books for your summer reading. All proceeds support programming at the library. The library is running a new program this summer called Book Bets，并且 volunteers will partner with children ages five to eight for storytelling and crafts at noon on selected Wednesday through the summer. Online registration is required. Six thousand forty-two people visited the library in April and checked out or downloaded twelve thousand nine hundred and twenty books and other items. Tenten's at fifty-eight library programs in April was one thousand nine hundred and fourteen people. For more information or to register for programs and activities, visit our website at www.ridleylibrary.org. Thank you.
Finance committee report, Mr. Marset.
Thank you, Mr. President. All Commissioners received a list of this month's bills and I'd like to make a motion for approval, subject to the controllers of the Home Council.
Motion made and seconded. Any question on the motion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Proposed? Motion carried. They all are new business.
No, nothing tonight.
I didn't know if the scouts had any questions for us.
You got a thumbs up.
All right, good to go. I'm sorry, Jack.
Happy Memorial Day. That's all I wanted to say.
Happy Memorial Day weekend, everybody, and a few of us attended Relish's grand opening, which was a big success. It was a lot of fun. Did a huge turnout and wishing well.
The country's crowded.
I'd like to congratulate the Boy Scouts, troop about forty-three. Thanks for coming out. Feel free to come back. It's not always this fun, but feel free to come back every last Monday of the month, you know? Join us up here. And Mr. McCafferty, congratulations. Thank you.
You should last Monday of the month.
Last Monday of the month.
I, 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 the Boy Scouts, thanks for coming out. If you ever have any questions or want to learn anything about the government, how it works, how it runs, what we just talked about tonight, feel free to contact us through email or, or send us a note. We'll give you a call. Happy to meet you. Then we all, we all meet with everybody in the community. So any questions at all, just reach out. Okay? Same thing we do, Lieutenant. Do you have any questions on law enforcement? Let's reach out. We'll take care of you. Okay, everybody have a great Memorial Day. Be safe and enjoy the summer. See you next month. Have a good night.